Oatana City Council Meeting to order for Tuesday, April 15th. With that, we ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Trulson.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, because of the tragedy in Boston, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda, and there is nothing that has changed since it was presented to you last Friday, so.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Brent.
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next item we have is a presentation for the Minnesota's 50 and Better Games, and that we have Greg Lewis here tonight. Would you please come? I've already signed it.
Good evening. My name's Greg Lewis. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to talk to you. Quite frankly, the mayor advised me to come in and talk to you about what's happening with the senior games. I'm gonna have to hold this because you don't have a podium here, and my eyes aren't good enough anymore. I'm one of the co-chairs. There are, obviously, there are two of us. Don Oberle is the other co-chair, and we've got a committee that we've been working on the senior games for approximately... Approximately two years. We have both professionals and volunteers. The primary volunteers right now are Oberle and myself. The professional heavy hitters involved in this enterprise are the folks from Park and Rec, Oatana Tourism Department, and Oatana Senior Place. If you don't know it, the Minnesota Senior Games have been going on for a while. The last two years, it was held in Mankato, and the first year, they had 250 participants. The second year, they had 400. We are only gonna be able to do it for one year because Bloomington is going to take it in 2014, and in 2015, it is going to be Nationals for the entire United States, being held in Bloomington. So this is kind of a warm-up. The senior games are being held June the 19th through the 22nd, and the events are being held within the city limits, and there's a couple places that we've had to go outside the city limits. One event in Medford and one down in Hope. We have a total of 20 different events. We're ranging from archery to volleyball, and since we had carte blanche with what we were allowed to do with this thing, we also fine-tuned it for our community. What I mean by that is we also included shotgun, more specifically, trap, and 22 rifle. If you don't know it right now, 22 rifle ammunition is impossible to find, so that's turning into an issue. Participants have to be 50 to 99 years of age. If you're 100 years old, I will pay for your participation. It's $35 a person, and it allows you to compete in five different, up to five different events. To date, we have had 82 individuals sign up. Obviously, the question you're probably gonna ask is, what have you got for a goal? Our goal is 250. We are thinking that the weather outside is not helping folks who want to participate, give them a sense of urgency. Hopefully, when the weather gets better, they're gonna say, hey, maybe I better sign up.
Although they need to circulate the loads of models, correct?
Yes. We've had folks from Vermont, Florida, Arizona, Wisconsin, North and South Dakota, and I think one from Nebraska, but the vast majority of the folks who have signed up are Minnesota Just as an aside, like I told you, our goal was 250 participants, and we're utilizing the Four Seasons as a kind of a rallying point. Everybody has to check in at the Four Seasons. Biggest pushback that we've had, I am selling it every day that I get an opportunity. If I come up and talk to you, it's a pretty good possibility that I think you're over 50 years of age. Obviously, you tread lightly with women on that one, or otherwise you'll probably get yelled at. The biggest pushback that I have had is, I'm not good enough. They don't realize that the athletes are divided up into not only age categories, but obviously gender breakdown too. So I'm 66 years of age. I would be competing in the 66 to 70 years of age. And we will be presenting gold, silver, and bronze medal for each grouping. Of interest to the city council, if we are able to meet the goal of 250 participants, not only will we have folks from out of the area, but from out of state, coming into our community and utilizing our restaurants and our hotels. In closing, three main points, and I think this is probably more for the camera than it is for you guys. Don't be afraid to participate. This should be about having fun, and come out and play with us. If you don't want to compete, at least volunteer. Some of the events are going to eat up a lot of volunteers, like the road race, that's probably gonna take 40 or 50 volunteers. Second, we continue to look for sponsors to help us defray the cost of medals, t-shirts, and signage. Just to give you an example, nothing's free. This little book right here, we produced 1,000 of them. It was about $2,200. I would like to give special thanks to Blue Cross Blue Shield and the Oatana Alina Hospital for being gold and silver level sponsors. Any contribution at all is greatly appreciated. We started with a budget of, we figured about $15,000. We're pretty close to it, but we need to have a little breathing room. Third, registration is online at www.minnasotaseenerg... Excuse me. M-N-S-E-N-G-E-M-S dot com, and it's all lowercase. Registration closes the 3rd of June. You have to understand why. We have to, when the, when the, all the dust settles, we've got to figure out which of the events that we have enough people participating in to continue on. Right now, the lion's share are pickleball is the big one. Older folks love pickleball, and cycling. If you look at the calendar, 3 June is only 48 days away, so it's getting down there. If you want to, if you can't do it online, you don't want to do it online, you're afraid of the computer, come into the Oatana Senior Place, and we will do it for you. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes my briefing. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Are the 80 you got already, are you seeing them 80 people go in for four or five sports? Are you seeing that happen, four or five sports?
I'll give you a classic example. I've signed up for three.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see in the book, I ran one off at home, I ran a copy of the one you got, I see it had racquetball and fairboat. Is that not continuing?
I'm sorry, it is.
Okay, I, it was in the book, racquetball's and fairboat, I know.
It is.
So I read the book, kind of, you know.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
You know, maybe you could describe just some of the events, you know, just for our audience, so maybe hit a few of the highlights, maybe?
Are you ready?
Wide, wide range.
Archery, racquetball, cycling, basketball, and the basketball is a free throw. Horseshoes, table tennis, the shotgun, track and field, and there's a lot in track and field. Cycling, disc golf, badminton, 5K run, and there's also a 10K run that's gonna be following, I think, the following day. Tennis, rifle, bowling, and I will beat you all at bowling. Pickleball, billiards, and pickleball, and tennis, and swimming. It's quite a bit of thing. If we haven't covered what you've got for a sport, it's an unusual sport.
After which you just said that you'd beat anybody in bowling?
Yes.
Are you exempt from getting a medal?
I will be exempt, yes. It's a great, it's a great question, and yes, I will be exempt.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think what we really need to do is promote it because it is a good, good thing for Oatana to have happen here. Would like to have it for two years, but I think Bloomington wants to get practicing, right? Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the next item, is Arbor Day proclamation, and with that, we'll go to the mayor.
Thanks, Les. It's the mayor's privilege, as do his due proclamations. This one's for Arbor Day, and it reads, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas, trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas, trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas, Oatana has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now, therefore, I, Thomas A. Coontz, mayor of the city of Oatana, will hereby proclaim April 26, 2013, to be Arbor Day in the city of Oatana, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our community forestry program, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to garden the hearts, and promote the well-being of present and future generation. Dated the 16th day of April, Thomas A. Coontz. And the other thing I'll add to that is that the city really does an outstanding job in participating with that, and for each retiree that we have during the year, they plant a tree for the retirees, and on April 26 at 12:15, we'll be planting six trees for our retirees for this year.
Thank you, Tom.
Where are you gonna plant the trees this year, Chris, out here?
Three of the trees will be on the West Hills campus, then one will be on Mineral Springs and Coward, the other two.
A full miner, and I don't remember where the sixth one is.
So you're gonna be moving...
Right, right.
Okay, that, those locations are of the choosing of the retirees.
Exactly, yep.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to 1.6.1, Resolution 4813, adopt assessments for outstanding utility accounts, and with that, we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. I would ask council to continue this hearing. We have some pending legal issues that we need further research on.
Okay, thank you. Before we do ask for a motion to table, is there any questions from the council? With that, I'll look for a motion to table.
So moved.
We have a motion by Nate to table. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been tabled. Thank you. We'll move on now to the financial report, and I'll do a quick recap of finances, and we have $60,277 for Southeast Service Cooperative, our April health insurance premium, $45,814 for Steel County Auditor, first quarter LEC costs, $25,685 for Yokum Oil fuel purchases, $270,693 for other expenditures, for a subtotal of $402,471. And to that, we add $71,347 for the April 1 Section 8 payments, for a grand total of What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion, pay the bills.
Motion by Kevin to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. Now we go on to the consent agenda item, which are minutes of council meeting, board, commission reports, event permits, and miscellaneous items, all grouped into one motion. Questions from the council? Raymond.
Chris, I just have one question. You know, years before, many months ago, we used to get a slip from Park and Rec, and the 20 hours or 10 hours, is that tabulated someplace and kept as donations, or, because we don't see that now like we used to, that's why it was...
We've gone to an electronic system now, so those notes are made electronically. We need to make sure that we include that information for the council, so what you're getting is kind of the paper copy. We send out an electronic copy to all of our departments where they can make comments and, and note what, what the financial contribution is. So we'll, we'll work on that for, for next time and make sure that you get that.
It'd be nice, I guess, it'd be nice to see what we're donating.
Yep.
Some way or another, because, you know, a lot of things, it has to be a lot of dollars that we're really helping the community, you know.
Yep, we'll do that.
Those numbers are being accumulated. We just didn't get the report this time.
Okay.
We're working on that to try to get that, so we do get it. We don't have a motion yet.
So moved, we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. Now we move on to the action items, which is 3.2.1 is a variance 1350 for Sandra Sprunk at 625 Cherry Place, variance, setback variance for new garage. Troy.
The proposed garage would be in the side yard with a setback of 20 feet from the front property line at its closest point. The southeast corner of the garage would be 30 feet from the setback line, and the difference of the setback is due to the dedicated right-of-way on the cul-de-sac that bulbs out. There's a site plan in your package there that indicates, you know, where the, where the garage is being located, and it's because it's on the end of that cul-de-sac, that one corner is closer than 30 feet than the other. It actually sits back behind the front building line of the house. The applicant desires the garage to be located closer to the front property line due to the existing grades in the area. The lot drops off to the west into a small ravine, and they will need a retaining wall along that back of the garage to keep it all at the same level. We did have a public hearing. We had no objections from the neighbors. The applicant did indicate at the public hearing that they might want to enlarge that garage, and so what the planning commission did was set that north building line at 36 feet from the house. So if they wanted to expand it anymore, they'd have to bring it closer to the house. Right now, they're showing a 10-foot setback between the garage and the, and the house, and they could reduce that down if they, if they so choose, but they locked that north building line where they had it proposed on the site plan, which keeps it at a 20-foot setback. So the planning commission recommended approval, provided the driveway shall not exceed 24 feet in width. The exterior elevations of the proposed garage shall be constructed to be compatible with the house, and the northernmost part of the garage is 36 feet or less from the house. So staff would recommend approval of this variance request as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council? Raymond.
Just concerned, you know, they already have a double garage, and I'll add this part, that's a lot of, that's a lot of speed.
Under our ordinance, it could actually go up to 1,000 square feet in a detached garage, because of the, kind of the ravine back there, and it is a drainage way back there, they're keeping it, you know, at 26 feet. It'll fit in, and there's a lot of space over on that north side there.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. Now we will move on to Resolution 4513, reimbursement for bond regulations, and that will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. As you know, whenever the city issues bonds for projects, the Internal Revenue Code requires that the city make a declaration of intent to reimburse itself prior to those expenditures coming out of the proceeds of the bonds. So what this, there are specific timelines in order for us to meet those deadlines. What this resolution would do would simplify the process and make sure that we're in compliance with that, and would authorize the finance director to make the city's declaration. It was recommended to us by our bond attorney, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council? Who's approved? We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you, Chris. And next is Resolution 46. There's 13 adopt rates for street opening permits, and that we'll go to Kyle.
Good evening. The, as part of our street opening permit, we charge in our Batumina Streets, the current price for replacing that is $20 per square yard. It's been over 20 years since that cost has been updated. I looked at the cost of materials, and it's about $13 a square yard for materials, so I'm recommending an increase from $20 to $40. That would be three times the material cost to cover trucking and labor to install that patch. Concrete patches, the contractor doing the work is required to get their own contractor to, to fix those.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 4613.
We have a motion to approve by Dave Burbank. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Thank you. Next one is Resolution 4713, award bid for East Broadway Project, and we'll go back to Kyle with this one.
Good evening. We received bids last Wednesday for the 2013 East Broadway Project. If you'll remember, this is the project, complete reconstruction from Lincoln Avenue to Chambers Avenue, and including Chambers Avenue to East Rice Lake Street. The bids we received were very good from three quality contractors. Hazelton Construction of Fairbowl was the lowest responsible bidder. Our, their bid was $418,495.46. The engineer's estimate was $504,263. So we feel the numbers were very favorable for the city and recommend approval of the bid to Hazelton Construction.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council?
So moved, we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We can proceed with that right now?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Next item is Resolution 2813, or is that 4813?
28.
2813, okay. Authorization to request advance funds for state aid projects, and that will go back to Kyle.
This is a resolution that was passed previously. We followed the guidelines sent to us by the state. Once we sent the resolution in, they came back and said that they'd like to see the amounts for the projects, and during that time, we've also recommended removing one of the projects from the list for this year, so we changed the amount of the advance request. If you remember, this is the advance of state aid funds. We get approximately, a little bit over a million dollars a year in state aid funds, which is gas tax money, for projects around town, and we can borrow up to four years ahead. So we're recommending borrowing an additional $1,650,700 for the three projects for this year.
On this, you may want to change the word bride to bridge.
I see that.
Last item, so. This is a note before it may be got signed. Thank you. Questions from the council? Cheryl, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 2813.
We have a motion by Brent to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Thank you. Now we move on to ordinances, 3.5.1, second reading of proposed ordinance 413, abolish Police Civil Service Commission, and that will go to Keith.
Thank you. The city council's being asked to have the second reading of ordinance number 223, repealing Oatana code that expressly accepts the provisions of Minnesota statute pertaining to a police civil service commission. Bolishing the police civil service commission will require unanimous vote of the council. The human services, or human resources laws and collective bargaining agreements provide necessary policies, procedures, and oversight to efficiently manage the business of the police department. Therefore, we are requesting abolishment of the police civil service commission. Our hiring processes will still involve community involvement, and at this time, the members of the civil service commission have unanimously approved the abolishment of the commission. At this time, the staff recommends abolishment of the police civil service commission.
Thank you, Keith. Questions from the council?
Motion, we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? That'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Trulson.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye.
We have all ayes.
Approved, second reading, let's go ahead with it now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We do move on to 3.5.2, second reading of proposed ordinance, Z230, Resona Oak Avenue, Commons Edition, and then we'll go to Troy with that.
This is the site of the old Hardee's, and Bud and Mark's site that's being planned for redevelopment. You approved a preliminary plan at the last meeting, and the first reading of the rezoning. It would be back parking lot off of Barney, which is on a separate lot, was in an R6 high-density residential zone. The rest of the property was in a B2 community business district, and to do the plan and put it all on one property, we needed it all in, in one zoning district. So this is just rezoning that back portion from an R6 high-density residential district to a B2 community business district.
Thank you.
So moved, we approve.
And this is a second reading.
This is the second reading, yes.
And we have a motion to approve by Ray Trulson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz.
Troy, do they have a start date, anything talked about on that property, or?
Demolition should probably begin in the next week or two.
Oh, really? Won't you?
And though you will see more zoning approvals and other approvals needed for that project, but they are getting ready for demolition.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? That's for a roll call.
Councilmember Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Trulson.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. All ayes, this has been approved. Thank you. And that was the second reading, so we don't need, we'll just wait for the other issues. Thank you. Next one is item 3.5.3, second reading of proposed ordinance, 613 of Men Chapter 5, Section 415, exemption for the Steel County Free Fair Board during the Steel County Free Fair, and that will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. As you know, this section pertains to races, tractor pulls, demolition derbies, other motorized activities at the fairgrounds grandstand. This ordinance was not meant to apply to the Steel County Fair, and this ordinance merely clarifies that point, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the council? Raymond.
Thank you, Les. As you know, this section pertains to races, tractor pulls, demolition derbies, other motorized activities at the fairgrounds grandstand. This ordinance was not meant to apply to the Steel County Fair, and this ordinance merely clarifies that point, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the council?
Chris, is that just the week of the fair? Would have somebody size the race other times, or?
Correct, it's only exempted.
Only that week of the fair.
Steel County Fair during that fair week.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll be abstaining from the vote since I'm on the fair board.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? With that, chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Nate, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? Noting that, we'll have, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Abstained.
Trulson.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. This has been approved also. Now, with that, we will move on to public comments from the citizens, and we would ask limited to two minutes, and items that are not on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward. We'll have you sign in to, or identify yourself. Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments, and that will go first to Kevin.
Nothing out of the fourth ward tonight.
Brent.
Nothing this evening.
Raymond.
Just got one comment. I, that property across from the police department was tore down over a year ago, and there's a lot of, I think it's due for cleanup, and it's time, his time is up, I think. So, I think we need to proceed with getting that property cleaned up there, so. There's a big pile of stuff that was still there from construction, and, I mean, tear down, it's been there for a long time, so.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Nate?
Nothing to add.
Great.
I'd just like to say thank you to Boy Scout Troop Number 246 for the gracious reception they gave me last night. I was there, they were working on their community citizenship merit badge, and we had a great conversation. They had some very interesting questions. It was fun to see them engaged in, in local happenings, and one of the big questions to the police chief was, they noticed those new black cars, and they, they thought they were pretty cool.
Okay, that is great. Thank you. Dave?
Nothing from Ward 3.
Ms. Mayor?
Just got a note back from APPA, American Public Power Association. Just wanted to let you know that I received the Oatana Resolution in the mail. I also just found out that Congressman Waltz has just co-sponsored the Terry Neal Resolution, House File 112, supporting tax-exempt municipal bonds. So, the resolution and your lobbying obviously worked, so it does pay to pass those resolutions and pass them forward.
Thank you, Don. You have anything, Chris?
Just a few items, just to remind everyone, our next coffee with the council will be held on May 18, Saturday morning, from 9 to 10, at The Kitchen. So, mark your calendars for that. We have some other items of note. This week is Severe Weather Awareness Week. There'll be two statewide tornado drills, one at 1:45 and one at 6:55 on Thursday, April 18. They're designed to remind individuals, businesses, families, to plan ahead for severe weather, you know, as we're heading into that. Yes, sir.
Did that coffee with the council get rescheduled for that date?
It did.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I think so. I, Greg and I both were unaware.
What, what was that date again?
I had sent out an email and got a few responses, but I thought we...
Obviously not from us.
Probably not. So, maybe we should back up. So, would the 18th work for the majority of you?
Yes.
Okay. Unless you, I'm having confirmation on the 11th. Unless you want to help me make brunch, we could stick with the 11th.
18th is fine.
18th, okay. All right. Moving on. Open House at Cota Living Community on Monday, April 22, from 2 to 7. And then, the Board of Appeal and Equalization will also be held on Monday, April 22, at